Morning, everybody.
Morning.
We will call the meeting to order. It is actually about 8:35.
8:35.
8:35. All right. Exactly.
Do you have a call?
Yes.
All right. You have a feeling bogus?
Yes.
Patrick Brown. Deborah Keinen. Patricia Avery. Richard Hilton.
Here.
Pius Bebel.
Oh.
Steve Summers.
Here.
Jim McGuire.
Here.
Jeffrey Faginshu.
Here.
Diane Marlin.
Here.
Dennis Roberts. Katina Wiltshire.
Here.
We have a forum.
All right. Thank you. And if there are any audio participants, we do have a guest here.
I am just observing. I'm Tanya Geese from Bray Bar Electric. We do a lot of projects here in town, and I'm just trying to see where we fit into something that you might be talking about here. I heard about you through the EDC.
Thank you. Welcome. And I'd like to introduce yourself, too.
Hi, everyone. I'm Chuck Smith. I'm the mayor of Rantoul.
Yes.
And I'll be taking over for Mr. Faginshu after he leaves. Getting familiarized with you.
All right. Thank you.
It's good to see you all again.
All right. Next, we'll have the approval of our meeting minutes of the June 23 RPC meeting.
Need approval. There.
Moved by Pius and seconded by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have our financial reports. And Betty?
Sure. So you have the consolidated financial report there for July 31. Our fund balance is $10.3 million, so it remains very healthy in terms of this environment. We do have about $841,000 in receivables, but that's not unusual, given the size of this agency. We did get two large payments on August 14 for $782,000 from the state of Illinois for the preschool for all programs. We're mildly encouraged by that. So again, there's nothing unusual to report, and all of our receivables are less than 90 days, so we're pleased about that.
Thank you. Any questions for Betty on financials?
Can you make some calls on our behalf, please?
All right. Do I hear a motion to accept and place on file the financial reports for June and July?
So moved.
Pius.
Dick.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we'll do our list of bills for June and July, and that will be done.
Sure. So you have the list of bills. There's not a lot that's unusual here. A lot of this reflects us gearing up for the new school year, more activity and workforce development, and a lot of payments on the PIP program, which is the Percentage of Income Payment Plan under the state of Illinois. So nothing unusual to report.
All right. Any questions on the list of bills? If none, I hear a motion to accept and place on file the list of bills for June and July.
So moved.
Second. Jeff?
Yeah.
Diane? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we'll do our list of bills for June and July, and that will be done.
Sure. So you have the list of bills. There's not a lot that's unusual here. A lot of this reflects us gearing up for the new school year, more activity and workforce development, and a lot of payments on the PIP program, which is the Percentage of Income Payment Plan under the state of Illinois. So nothing unusual to report.
All right. Any questions on the list of bills? If none, I hear a motion to accept and place on file the list of bills for June and July.
So moved.
Second. Jeff? Diane? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see. We are now on our -- down to our action items. And the first is the Head Start Service Bid Contract. Brandy, would you like to put on that?
So Brandy wasn't able to be here this morning, so I present on her behalf. We solicited bids, as were required to do, under the USDA Child and Adult Food Care Program for our Urbana and Savoy Head Start sites. So we did a public bid solicitation. We received two bids, one from Aramark for $154,560 and one from Marbles Catering Service, which is a locally owned business located in Savoy, in the amount of $145,544. I have the actual bid responses, if any of the commissioners would like those. We have worked with Marbles Catering since 2006. They provide a lot of food service to private daycare centers and public entities. We've been pleased with not just the quality of their food, but their willingness to accommodate special needs. Sometimes children have allergies or food issues, and they've been very flexible and amenable to those changes. So we request approval for a one-year contract with Marbles Catering in Savoy with up to four years renewals as the low bidder.
All right. Any questions?
I move to approve the contract with Marbles Catering for $1,045 and $544.
Second. Any discussion?
I'm assuming that the other Head Start has had locations? Is that, I mean, like?
The other locations, so this is just for Urbana and Savoy. The other locations, we have a cook on site, and it's not really practical to deliver foods up to Rantoul from this location. And so this is for lunches. We do prepare snacks on site and breakfast foods on site. So these are for lunches.
Savoy, sorry, New York City does have a kitchen, still, but it's not big enough to have lunches, if I can.
Right.
All right. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the CDAP Revolving Loan Fund Financial Guidelines. And Betty?
Sure. So the Regional Planning Commission, since 1983, we have operated a CDAP, or Community Development Assistance Program Revolving Loan Fund. During that time, and this supports low-interest loans for business startups or business expansions. So since 1983, oh, and it provides 50% of the total project cost. So there has to be public-private financing for these business loans, and there has to be proportionate job creation. We have assisted since that time 77 projects representing over $13 million in loans, and we've leveraged $52 million in private investment in startups and expansions and created over 1,100 jobs. From time to time, we, and this has not been updated since 2006, we would like to update our financing guidelines. In this regard, what we're asking for today is that we, our guidelines represent more of the economic conditions in our community, gives us a little bit more flexibility to include the entire geographic area, which means we could include Champaign and Urbana. CDAP funds in the past precluded us from doing anything inside the cities, but had to be countywide. So this gives us a little more flexibility to address loan demand throughout the community, throughout Champaign County, and it is limited to Champaign County, to give us a bit more flexibility with regard to job creation, so that we can jumpstart some new businesses or business expansions. The job creation element would still be there, but we'd have a little bit more flexibility so that we could respond to individual clients. And thirdly, it would synchronize the loan review committee structure to parallel that of other RPC loan review committees. So it would parallel the IRP or the CSBG loan review committee. So I've attached guidelines, proposed guidelines for your review and approval. And again, the eligible uses don't change. The geographic area simply expands. The loan terms don't change, and loan sizes range from $5,000 to $1 million. We offer a closing fee of 1%. And terms are negotiable with a maximum of 20 years. Again, we want to be flexible to address the economic need in our community with these terms. The loan requirements remain the same, the data, and it typically parallels what the private sector banks require. So it's a partnership between the banks and public sector financing to provide that gap financing to allow a business to expand or to start up. So, and with regard to the CDAP Loan Review Committee, we recommend eight members for two-year renewal terms. That's on page 82. So that would include, this is again synchronized with our own loan review committees internal to the RPC, three commercial loan professionals, those are typically bankers, two economic development professionals, one private sector representative, one representative from the Regional Planning Commission, and one non-voting attorney. That helps us with our loan closing and our documentation for loans. So I'm suggesting your review and approval of these updated guidelines.
All right. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
So previously, just Champaign and Urbana were excluded. All the municipalities could apply for loans?
So the municipalities, they're, it has to be a commercial business. It can't be a public sector, similar to the IRP loan program. That can be a public sector entity, but this is strictly commercial lending with a public-private partnership.
Previously, Champaign and Urbana were not part of it?
This would now include Champaign and Urbana.
But a lot of the places were, like Rantoul and Mohammed.
All, everything within Champaign County, yes. So it expands our ability to respond to loan demand throughout our community.
How do you advertise the availability of this program?
So, you know, that's always been a challenge for us, but our economic development person, Kathy Larson, and Maury, our community actions director, we've advertised in Central Illinois Business Magazine. We try to have things out on our website. She meets with local banks regularly, commercial lending divisions, to talk about how we can partner with the banks to perhaps generate more loan activity. It's been a challenge since 2008. I mean, loan demand has been low, not just for Champaign County, but throughout the state of Illinois. So we're trying our best to get the word out there. We probably need to do more, and we continue to drive that out. Litz, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, we probably need to do more marketing. I have, I did attend the EDC meeting.
Earlier this month.
Earlier this month. So I've been going around the community meeting with various businesses, as well as individuals to promote not only this particular program, but what we do as an agency. So hopefully, through all those efforts, we can, you know, get more interest in working with us, so that we can support local businesses with funding.
And we do use the Economic Development Corporation, the Chamber. We have good relationships with all the economic development professionals in Savoy, City of Champaign, all of the municipalities. So we're constantly in contact with city, county staff, and the EDC and the Chamber in terms of interest or potential interest, and we make cold calls as well. So again, you know, it's been a challenge, but we're hoping with improving economic conditions that we can get this money out there, because it's available, and we would love to lend it to businesses that plan to expand in our area.
Probably be good to meet with our economic development staff at the cities, just to let them know that this is.
Kathy Larson, we're within, yeah, we're within, and with the small business development center for the City of Champaign, I don't know, they have been working together on all this.
Was this the loan program that was utilized for the hotel in Rantoul?
Yes.
Well, a half a million, or was it 250,000?
Do you remember? Yeah, so Rantoul benefited almost to the tune of, you know, half a million dollars
for our new hotel.
Those are the kind of projects we love to do. Again, job creation, permanent economic activity, and it spawns other economic development activities. So this just gives us a little bit more flexibility to do those things responsive to things like the current Rantoul.
Any other questions? Questions? All right. So we already have a motion, second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. The next item we have on our agenda is the preliminary 2018 RPC proposal.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely. Before I go through the presentation of the preliminary budget for FY 2018, of which we'll be seeking preliminary approval from the commission, for those who are new on the commission, what I wanted to do is kind of explain the binder that's been provided to you. The binder is organized by the operating fund of the commission, of the RPC, and then the eight program areas that we'll be going over today. So the operating fund, transportation planning, which is a program area, regional planning and development, police training, community services, early childhood fund, workforce development, economic development fund, and then the USDA economic development fund. Just in general, so the FY 2018 budget is prepared for January 1 through December 31. That is the fiscal year for the agency. In terms of process, so today, we will be seeking preliminary approval of the budget, and then on Tuesday, we will be presenting the budget before the county board, and then in November, we will come back to the commission, once we have established our salary guidelines to seek approval from the commission. The, just to be high level, the five regional planning commission funds, which I kind of alluded to, are the operating, early childhood, workforce development, economic development, and the USDA economic development fund. Our proposal for FY 2018 encompasses about 100 active contracts that the agency has, again, covering the eight general major program areas for the organization. The grants account for about 88% of, so 88% of the overall budget of the agency consists of federal and state grants. So we are pretty much reliant on state and federal funding, so 88% of that makes up our overall grant budget. Salary-infringed benefits expenses represent nearly 65% of the total anticipated operating expenditures, after we factor out all the client, direct client assistance that we have to do with our programs. We are looking at staffing levels of about 228 for the overall agency. And then, just to set the context before going to the specific funds, as you know, we are clearly, you know, operating in very uncertain environment, especially with our federal budget. The president has proposed, in some cases, some of our programs, complete elimination; in other cases, significant reductions. Congress has been on recess, I think during the month of August. They're due to come back in September. Hopefully, the proposed cuts will not be put in place, but I'm not so confident that there will be a budget. It may be a continuing resolution, and hopefully, there won't be a government shutdown. So our budget is prepared, taken into account some of the uncertainties that we are seeing on the horizon with our federal funding, as well as at the state level. Moving on to the, go back to the first slide. So the operating fund, again, total revenue, so this is an appropriation level of $26 million. The actual, I think, revenue we're anticipating will be somewhere around $22 million. We do get a higher appropriation level, just in the instance, get additional funding during the year, then we don't have to get a, come back and get another appropriation. But however, if there are any new contracts, those new contracts would be presented before the commission if we have received any new funding during the fiscal year. So it's a $26 million appropriation level. We're looking at 228, funding 228 staff, full-time equivalency, and an expenditure of about $25 million. The agency budget, as I pointed out, accommodates five funds. We have 100 contracts, and let's move to the next slide. So the general operating budget is about $13 million. That will support about 62 full-time equivalents staff, an expenditure of about $13,890,000. We are anticipating limited growth, again, in FY 2018, based on the uncertainty with federal funding, as well as with state funding. But however, our operating account includes an increase of about $400,000 in new federal and state grant funding. Those consist primarily of funding from IDOT, that is through Reader's Department. We also have some funding from the Champaign County Mental Health Board to fund the justice system diversion program. We have some other funding to deal with some homelessness programs, a small grant from Amren, and then we are planning to apply for some preschool funding in September that will fund, I think, a couple classrooms in Rantoul. So one of the things that we're proud of at the agency is that our administrative costs are less than 8% of the agency budget. This makes us very competitive, because the federal threshold is about, I think, 15% is what is allowed. At the state level, it's about 20%. So at 8% of admin of the overall budget, that makes us very competitive when we seek other funds from other funding sources. We're anticipating staffing levels to be stable, but again, you know, if things change with Congress and so forth, that may have an impact on our overall staffing plan. The early childhood fund, which primarily is the Head Start funding, this consists of a blend of both federal, as well as state funding streams. This allows us to provide comprehensive full-day child development services to over 576 families. And so, again, as I pointed out, we are anticipating, we're submitting a proposal that's due in September to the state, the Illinois State Board of Education, to expand, for expansion funding, that will fund two classrooms in Rantoul. Again, limited growth for Head Start. FY 2018 federal Head Start funding, that proposal by the White House is to reduce it by, I think it's $53 million, which is what was the increase that Congress gave to the program. And so thankfully, it's not a complete elimination, but it's the growth that we had experienced, which for us, I think, accounts for about 1% of our overall program. That is what's been proposed for a cut at the federal level. So we're anticipating limited growth for Head Start and early Head Start in FY 2018. But again, that's an 8 million, sorry, it's an $8 million program, funds about 126 full-time equivalents, so 126 staff. The next one is workforce development. With this, this includes increased federal allocation of about $500,000. I think we received this, was it earlier this year, Betty? Betty, was it earlier this year, the increase? $500,000? Yes. $500,000 for full implementation of the Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act. This provides a one-stop delivery system. This allows us to respond to the federal focus on experiential training and business engagement, and it also supports our comprehensive business workforce needs assessment. It's about $2.9 million in revenue, supports 41 full-time staff, and we're anticipating the expenses to be, to match the revenue. The next fund is the Economic Development Fund. In this one, we're anticipating $110,000 in revenue, expenses of $262,000, and I'll explain that in a little bit. But this accommodates restricted revolving loan portfolio with proportionate job creation. We had a little bit of discussion about that earlier. It helps to improve economic conditions, expected to, again, generate loan demand and associated business development in FY 2018. We are anticipating to outlay about $500,000 in new commercial lending in FY 2018. And so if there's any question as far as why the revenue is less than the expenditure, we do have a reserve that allows us to put more funding out for commercial loans, and that can be found in tab, the tab that's labeled workforce, I'm sorry, the tab that's labeled Economic Development Fund 475. If you get, if you go to that, you will see that we have a reserve of about $7.3 million that allows us to put more funding out for loans. The next one is the Fund 474, which is the USDA Loan Fund. This is the intermediary revolving loan program, or IRP. It helps us to provide low-interest loans in rural areas with a population that is consisted of 25,000 people or less. It helps us to promote economic development in those areas through job creation, and it's about a $210,000 revenue that we're anticipating, and we're expecting to spend about $53,000 of that. It includes an estimated disbursement of over $250,000 in new loan activity in FY 2018. So that primarily is a high-level presentation of our FY 2018 budget, with specifics to the five funds that we have as an agency. But again, I just want to underscore the fact that we are, as you all know, operating in pretty uncertain times, and we've tried to be as conservative as possible in preparing our budget, so that if things do change at the federal level, that we are able to deal with that accordingly. Take any questions on the budget as presented?
Yeah, I was just wondering, maybe I hadn't heard the figure, but when a loan is given to, for commercial use, is there a, then a benefit to the Regional Planning Commission? Is there a rate of interest that we receive from that, or is it interest-free?
You know, we get interest back investment interest, and that's what supports our economic development, especially salary.
Does it vary depending on the kind of loan?
It's low. I mean, we do much lower than the private, so if the bank's charging 5%, we're going to be 2% or 3%.
Okay.
Below that, so that the blended rate for the business is more attractive. So that's why the public sector input makes a project go or not go, oftentimes. That's why it's gap financing primarily.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Pius?
I move to approve the preliminary budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Steve? Without any further discussion, then, do we have all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are, next up is our Head Start and Early Management Report, including the financial and service series, and I keep looking over there for Brandy, but she's not here. So Betty, are you going to?
Yeah, so Brandy's not here, as we mentioned. So she's got some materials, her normal, regular reports, which include enrollment, attendance, meal counts, policy council data. She also included in here, for your review, we are required by the performance standards in the Office of Head Start, that all governing bodies receive training, and so we've provided, many of you have already undergone that training, but for those of you that are new, we've listed in her memorandum a number of videos, training websites, that give an overview of the Head Start program. So we're required to let you know that these resources are available, and they're available online. Other than that, I think she just recommended to receive and place on file.
Okay. So is there a motion to accept and place on file the Head Start and Early Learning Management Reports?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Dennis, second?
Second.
Pius, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So that did include the governance training part of that?
Yes.
Okay. I thought that was my understanding, so. So do we need to make a separate motion to accept and place that on file also, or just include it in her whole report? We had it separate on the agenda.
We had it separate on the agenda, so maybe we need to do a separate.
I move to approve the second part of the recording. Sorry, Betty.
Yes, the Head Start.
The head start of the training.
Yes. Second? All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Now we have our program division updates, and Betty, would you try to go first?
Sure. So just a few things. We continue with AFSMI in terms of contract negotiations. In fact, we have a negotiating session that begins again this afternoon, and we're at the point where, you know, we are negotiating on wages, so we continue that process. It seems to be going very well. We've concluded our summer youth employment program with a total of 133 participants.
Yeah, so Brandy's not here, as we mentioned. So she's got some materials, her normal, regular reports, which include enrollment, attendance, meal counts, policy council data. She also included in here, for your review, we are required by the performance standards in the Office of Head Start that all governing bodies receive training, and so we've provided, many of you have already undergone that training, but for those of you that are new, we've listed in her memorandum a number of videos, training websites, that give an overview of the Head Start program. So we're required to let you know that these resources are available, and they're available online. Other than that, I think she just recommended to receive and place on file.
So is there a motion to accept and place on file the Head Start and Early Learning Management Reports?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Dennis, second?
Second.
Pius, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I think Harry's. So that did include the governance training part of that?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Okay. I thought that was my understanding, so. So do we need to make a separate motion to accept and place that on file also, or just include it in her whole report? We had a separate on the agenda.
We had it separate on the agenda, so maybe we need to do a separate.
I move to approve the separate, no, the recording, sorry, Betty.
Okay. Yes, the Head Start.
The head start of the training.
Yes.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I think Harry's. Now we have our program division updates, and Betty, would you try to go first?
Sure. So just a few things. We continue with AFSMI in terms of contract negotiations. In fact, we have a negotiating session that begins again this afternoon, and we're at the point where, you know, we are negotiating on wages, so we continue that process. It seems to be going very well. We've concluded our summer youth employment program with a total of one-hundred-and-thirty-three participants. That included seventy-two from Champaign, twenty-two from Urbana, five from Care For You, I'm sorry, nine from the Care For You program, fifteen for Mohammed, and fifteen for Rantoul. It was a successful summer youth employment program this year. I think it was robust, and we look forward to continuing that in the future. We, as Delitzo mentioned, were intending to apply for preschool for all expansion funding for Rantoul to create two ten-hour-a-day classrooms at our Rantoul facility in response to what the parents have indicated they need up there. So we're hopeful for success in that application. We had a week-long fiscal monitoring review of our preschool-for-all program, and it's our understanding there will be no findings. And we will have a week-long fiscal and programmatic review of our CSBG program first week of September.
Thank you. We have our human resource update from Betty.
Good morning. So it is Head Start hiring season, back to school for many of our students and teachers. The Personnel Transaction Report included in your packet reflects transactions from July fifteenth to August fifteenth. I am happy to report that the bus driver positions are filled as of today. Thank you, Pius. We actually have got, we've had to be very creative on how we recruit and retain employees. We had a successful job fair in Rantoul, at the Village of Rantoul. The facilities manager and transportation manager and I headed up to Rantoul, and we were able to hire three out of the three bus drivers during that job fair. They are currently in the process of the background checks, physicals, and immunization processes. We also conducted a job fair in conjunction with the WIOA Division of the Organization, seeking to hire particularly pre-K and Head Start teachers. And we just ran a successful job fair yesterday at Head Start with, on the spot interviewing, where we have ten prospective employees for various positions. To make sure that we have pre-K teachers in place in the next ten days or so, we are rapidly getting Head Start teachers who qualify to be pre-K teachers, their temporary teaching licenses for about six or seven teachers, so that we are ready to go. And so, as you can tell, it's been a busy time here in the Human Resources office, as this is the time of year when we are ramping up staffing for the, particularly the Head Start program.
Any questions for Becky? All right, I believe Rita has our planning and community development report.
Lisa is the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have Rita on my, I'm sorry, I have Rita on my agenda here. So.
It's okay, I would have taken that, I would have just passed.
Well, I kept looking over there for Brandy earlier, too, so.
Oh, I have a report on file for your review. I'll highlight some things. One thing that's upcoming is our LIHEP fifth season. That has changed the start date, sometimes it's September, sometimes it's October. It's going to be October, they report that that will be the ongoing start date years to come. In order to try to avoid long lines and disappointed folks, we're going to try to get the word out and do some media spots to make sure that people know that the program starts in October. So we will be doing some work to make sure that people are educated about what the resources are and when they begin, so we can be sensitive to their needs. The other thing, in July and August, we do a whole lot of work in my division in startup of programs, applications, tons and tons of applications. One of the big ones is actually for the homeless services in Champaign County. We prepare a notice of funding application for the entire continuum of care that also includes a number of projects. This year, projects, seven of which are for the Champaign County Regional Planning that we have put forth, a total of seven-hundred-and-nine-thousand dollars will be applied for, some in renewal funds, also in new proj, excuse me, new projects. Essentially about half million of that is for projects that support, that we actually at the Champaign County Regional Planning do for the community and homeless services. We also, over probably the last six months, have been working with the Champaign County Sheriff's Office and the National Group to do a survey related to frequent utilizers, and I highlighted that in here. We looked at some data of those persons that had three or more incarcerations, and then also matched that up with homeless incidents, per HUD's definition of homelessness. What we've actually found is that there's not the anticipated high correlation between those that have frequent incarcerations and homeless incidents. There's going, they're actually finalizing that national study right now, and we'll be happy to share that when that's completed. Brandy and I, talking about Brandy now, we actually are working, the Head Start Division, and then also Community Services. We have to do needs assessments every three to five years. We're going to do that collaboratively in the upcoming years, so we're doing some planning to make sure that we're doing that in one more comprehensive way versus doing two different needs assessments. And then I always provide information about our centralized intake for homeless in the development report. I'm happy to field any questions if you have any.
At this time, we are working on preparing two grant applications, considering that the university agreed to provide the Eastman for the construction of two charuse paths, one along Florida Avenue, the south side of Florida Avenue, between Race Street and Lincoln Avenue, and the other one will be connecting the side path on First Street from Windsor to Curtis Road in Savoy. The lead agencies for those projects will be for the one in Urbana, the City of Urbana, for the one on First Street, the Village of Savoy agree to be the lead agency for that project. Both projects will be on university property, that's why there was a lot of discussion about the way of moving forward with these two projects. We're really excited about these two projects and getting the funding for them, because these are the two top priority projects for bikers in the community. We are also working on the possibility of applying for an INFRA grant. An INFRA grant is a national significant freight and highway project. It will provide funding for highway freight projects of national or regional significance, and within that type of grant, there is funding specifically for grade separation. We are just finishing the Curtis Road corridor study, and as part of the Curtis Road corridor study that we did, there was, from the public, a lot of concerns, safety concerns, related to the existing crossing at Curtis Road and on lap US forty-five. That was the first priority project for the people attending those meetings and the general public regarding what is going on there. Then we were able to find this funding, and we'll be putting together a grant application for this project. The good news about the grant application, the grant application is eighty percent federal, twenty percent local, but there is a possibility that we can get sixty percent funding from the Illinois Commerce Commission, because the Illinois Commerce Commission allocate funding for highway rail crossings. Then if we get that sixty percent, only we'll be requesting forty percent from the federal funding, of the federal funding, which will increase our possibility of getting the grant. Then we are working on that, we are estimating the cost of the grade separation to be about fifteen million dollars, then it will be good news for Savoy if they can get this done without providing any local funding, and will increase the safety of our transportation network. Also, last week, we received a one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar grant from IDOT. We apply for state planning and research funding. We are getting ready to update or develop our models for the update of the long-range transportation plan. At this time, we have a line-use model in place that we use for the development of the previous long-range transportation plan, but we were concerned that the model wasn't giving us the kind of output that we were looking for. Then at this time, we are, we'll be using a new software called Urban SIM that will be able to model the community at the parcel level. We'll have information for every parcel in the community. Then the funding provided for IDOT will help us out on paying for the cloud service for the software and for doing a lot of data collection that is not available at this time. And the last item will be, we'll have the next residential electronic collection on Saturday, October fourteenth, at Parkland College. Registration online will open on September fifth at eight o'clock. If you know anyone who is interested in getting rid of electronics, this is a good opportunity for them, but they have to register online on September fifth at eight AM. There is a website available, and then once they register, five to seven days before the event, they will get a postcard that they will have to present at the site to be able to drop the electronics there. Do you have any questions? Let me know. And today is the opening of the Kikapu Ride to Trail, five-thirty at St. Joe.
Welcome everybody out to St. Joe to see that five-thirty today, so. Diane Marlin and I will be doing the ribbon cutting ceremony, so.
On bicycle?
I won't be on a bicycle. My sons were giving me a hard enough time with the whole scissor thing anyway, so I shouldn't be on a bicycle. So, yes, please.
Yes, and I'd just like to say that I've been working more or less behind the scenes with community members and the Office of Dick Durbin to initiate planning for the continuation of the Boneyard Creek pathway connectivity between the already completed downtown sections that have been planned, if not completely built, to Lincoln Avenue. So this is like a westward extension of the Boneyard Creek path, which we hope to connect with the Kikapu Trail eventually. So I'm starting to look for funding, and we found out that all the residents, the landowners on the north side of the creek, in the four-hundred block of Main Street, are willing to have their properties purchased if FEMA will come in and show an interest. So I'd like to eventually evolve that plan with the Regional Planning Commission as we go forward and get support from this group.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussions or, all right, let's go, and we need a motion to accept and place on file our division updates, fiscal, human resources, community services, and transportation. Do I have a motion?
All right.
All second?
Just a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have Delitzo, CEO, Management Report, next.
Thank you, Chair. I will start off by just highlighting a few state budget items. So to pick up on Lisa's report, very happy with some of the outcomes from the budget process, particularly as it relates to the LIHEP funding. The state LIHEP funding, which, if you don't know, but those funds are from the regulated utilities, and they assess a surcharge on their residential, industrial, and commercial customers, and those funds are specifically used to serve the folks that have low income so that they can afford their utilities. In years past, that fund has been subject to sweeps to make up any shortfalls that we have in our state budget, but in this process for FY 2018, we worked with a coalition of other organizations to ensure that the LIHEP funds would not be subject to any fund sweeps. And so in the legislation that was passed and is now law, there is provision within the statute for the FY 2018 budget exempting the LIHEP funds from any fund sweeps to make up any shortfalls that we may have in our budget. As you may know, there were some funds that were included for fund sweeps so that the state can catch up on the fifteen billion dollars, I think, that they are owing to vendors, but we're very happy that LIHEP was not one of those funds. In, I think, Betty's report, as far as preschool for all funding, at the last meeting we had, we were still owed almost, I don't know if it was six-hundred-thousand dollars in funding by the Illinois State Board of Education. We worked with our local legislators, as well as contacts within the Comptroller's Office, and we have probably now about two-hundred-thousand dollars that's left to be paid, so most of that has been paid by the Comptroller's Office. So we're very happy about that, and we're very thankful to our local legislators that advocated on behalf of the agency to get those funds released. The other thing I wanted to share with the commissioners is that I've been involved in some negotiations with our major utility in the area, which is Amren. To give you a little bit of background, last year, around December, there was a Clean Jobs Bill that was passed by the General Assembly and was signed by the governor. Part of that, it was a huge bill, it had, I think, a couple of nuclear power plants that were going to close, one in Clinton, I think, one in the Quad Cities, and so that prevented those power plants from closing, and some jobs were saved in those communities. But the part that we're interested in is that there is funding that the regulated utilities in our state, so that would be Amren, ComEd, and then up north would be some of the major gas companies, People's Gas and Niko Gas, they have funding to do energy efficiency work. And the funds used to be administered by the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, but due to the fact that in the last two, three years, due to the budget impasse, those funds had not been appropriated to be spent, and so the work that there should be doing in terms of making buildings and homes energy efficient, those funds were stuck because there was no authority to spend them. And so the utilities included in this Clean Jobs Bill, pulling those funds out of the department, and then them operating those funds directly. The law took effect June first, and so between June first and December thirty-first, the utilities have been working on transitioning those funds out of the department and then developing a plan on how they would utilize those funds. So where we fit in is that we, Amren is interested in funding the agencies in their territory, which includes our organization, there are about twenty-seven agencies in the Amren territory. This would result in expanding our weatherization program. This is the program where we go into low-to-moderate-income homes, and we do some retrofitting, and we may even put new, you know, do some HVAC work so that the home can save on utilities. This will potentially triple our program. And so between September first and December thirty-first, once Amren's plan is approved by the Illinois Commerce Commission, it's, there's some controversy, I think, to their plan, it's all been in the news, because they want to put more resources towards low-to-moderate-income weatherization funds, as opposed to spending most of it on making commercial buildings or non-residential buildings energy efficient. So if the plan is approved, which we'll find out probably in the next week or so, our agency and the other agencies in Amren's territory will begin to work with the utility on how we can ramp up our agency to be able to begin January first in implementing, which could be three times the size of our program, and weatherizing homes in our county. So looking forward to that. If there, if things go the right way, we'll certainly provide an update to the commissioners as to what the outcome has been of these negotiations. The, on the administrative side, next week, on Tuesday, I think it's the twenty-ninth, we are going to be having the first, I think, all-staff training event for this agency. My understanding is, different programs within the agency will have their own trainings or meetings, but for the first time, I think, next week, we'll have the entire two-hundred-and-whatever, twenty-eight staff in one location. This will give This will give us an opportunity to begin thinking about how we can plan as an agency as a whole. We do have the various departments, but the vision here is to get everybody in the same room and begin to think as one agency and not the various separate departments that we have. I have had the opportunity, and I'm continuing to meet with various external stakeholders to the agency. I've met with the mayors, I've met with businesses, met with the Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development Corporation, and so forth. And I'm continuing to do that to get a more external perception about what the agency's focus should be, what we're doing well, what we do, what we're great at doing, what else we should be working on as an agency, so that all of that information will culminate in working with the commissioners to develop a comprehensive strategic plan for the agency as a whole. So I've had, I think, great information that's been shared. A lot of it has been consistent across the board, so that's good. And I have more meetings to do. I'm going to be meeting with some of the county board members so that I get the same information from them. Few things I wanted to highlight that I shared with folks like the mayors that I've met with. We are certainly interested in working on how we centralize data collection within the organization. I know Rita's going to do a presentation on our ongoing efforts with data. But one of the things that I heard from various stakeholders within the community is the interest in ensuring that RPC is the repository for data throughout this community. There are some organizations that are gathering data, but I think the expertise that we have in-house to collect, analyze, and assess data, I think we, from what I understand, folks would prefer that that is this organization. And so, we're going to be working towards that. We're also looking at how we centralize data internally, so not just for folks coming from outside looking for various information, but internally. We have, as you heard from the budget that was presented, 100 different programs or contracts that we operate as an organization. And within those programs, there are various databases that are required by the funding sources. And so, if we look at just the social services side, and if we're trying to figure out, you know, if there's one family, for instance, that has come in for a particular program, and we're trying to determine what other services have we been able to provide to that particular family, we would have to go into various databases to make that determination, which can be time-consuming. And in some instances, we may even be double-counting that information. So it's not as accurate as we would hope. So we're going to be working towards centralizing data internally. If someone says, hey, can you run data on, you know, a particular dataset, we want to be able to do that. And we want to build, leverage the expertise that we have so that the other programs that we operate in the organization will benefit from having this centralized data process. The other thing is to add to that, we're also interested in developing a seamless point of entry, particularly on the social services side. If a family comes in, we want to be able to, through having a cross-functional team, we want to be able to determine what other services can we provide to that particular family or whole household. And if we don't have those programs, you know, then obviously, we would be referring them to other services within the community. But that way, it makes it a more, I guess, pleasant experience for the family, so they're not having to come back two, three times to be qualified for services. Or in some instances, they may not even know if there are other programs within the organization that they would qualify for. So that's something we've already started, you know, having discussions internally about how to do that. And then, you know, how we integrate technology to support the system that we're going to develop internally on providing that seamless point of entry for customers on the social services side. Very interested in leveraging our internal capacity, you know. So Rita's department, again, deals a lot with data. They developed several models that help to predict, you know, where populations are going to be a few years from now. We want to leverage that also on the social services side so that we are able to think about services in the future and not when things become critical, and then we're trying to figure out how do we address that with all the limited funding that we have. So we can begin to plan a little further ahead. And so, we'll be leveraging some of that internal expertise to enhance our service delivery in all the programs that the RPC provides. The last thing I will point out again is, this is an ongoing effort on how we enhance measurable outcomes. Everywhere I've gone, you know, and it's not just in the community, this is with our various funders, you know, they're interested in how we're measuring outcomes with the programs and services that we're providing. And so, this is something that we're going to continue to work on, and how we utilize logic models to design our program and our service delivery efforts throughout the organization. So those are just a little bit of the few things that I've been working with the staff on the last three months that I've been here, and it's been tremendous. It's been great to work with the team. Betty's been great in helping me with the transition. And so, looking forward to working with the commissioners as we develop any planning for the agency as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Rita, you, well, is there any other old business or is there a new business?
Yes.
I have you under new business.
Okay.
Rita has a website update concerning the data portals, and so that's part of our new business report.
Okay. Good morning again. As Dalitzo mentioned it from his meetings with several stakeholders in the community, there was the common theme of providing data for the community. I just want to make everybody aware here of the data that is already available in our website. And if you go to our main website... Okay. If we go to our main website, of course, we have the Kikapu Ride to Trail today. And you go to projects and documents, I'm going to start with planning and development, and you go to planning and development, we have the Champagne County community indicators. We have indicators for eight different areas in our community. And associated to all those eight different indicators, we have more than 34 datasets. For example, if we go to education, and we go to educational attainment, you will see a description of the indicator, all the data from 2006 until now related to educational attainment for Champagne County. And we have all the dataset available here for Champagne County, as well as an explanation in terms of statistical analysis for that data and the source of that data. We do that for all the different indicators that we have and all the different datasets that we have. For example, if you go to sustainability, for sustainability, we have the different indicators. We can look at air quality, for example, and we have data for equality for the days that were worse than moderate. As you can see, we have been doing better than in the past, and we have all the datasets for that indicator, the explanation for the indicator, the data source for the indicator. This is data that you can download, and we'll have an Excel file with all the dataset that you can use. I know that many of you are interested on economics and poverty. You can see on economic and poverty, for example, let's see at the poverty rate, we have the poverty rate data. This looks scary, but in reality, when you look at the margin of error, there is not significant difference between the different years for the poverty rate, and we explain that here. But we have several datasets available in our website, and these are datasets that we are tracking over the years to see how well we are doing. At the same time, we have another dataset, which is the regional dashboard. Basically, the regional dashboard provide descriptive information. We don't analyze the data, the data is available there, but what we do is we provide the data and compare the data with other counties around Champagne County, and we disaggregate that data by cities and by township. For example, if we go to employment, income, and poverty, you can see that we have here for five different counties that data, Champagne, McLean, Macon, Peoria, and Sangamon County, all the data related to employment, income, and poverty. Then, we disaggregated by municipalities within Champagne County in detail, and then we disaggregated by township. And with all that data, that data, we always include the margin of error that people are aware of the statistical significance of that data. Then, this is data that we provide, you can see in detail by county, by township, by municipality, by region, for all the different datasets that we have in our dashboard. For example, if we go to agriculture, we have data about the acreage and size of the farms, and then the yield production of sorbing or corn, and all that information is available there. We have the same kind of data here for, for example, we have transportation. For transportation, we have the data on, for all the counties regarding how people commute to work, and then we have the data by municipality within Champagne County, all the detail data, and by township, we have all the detail data. And this is data, again, that you can download when you click here, and the data is available in Excel, and that's data that your staff can use at any time because it's available from downloading the data from there. This is in terms of planning and community development. We have also a set of data for transportation. If we go to transportation here, and we go to the Keywords Open Data Portal, we have divided the data. This data is mostly associated to our long-range transportation plan. Every year, we look at the status of the goals that we have set for our long-range transportation plan, and this is mostly associated to that. But we have divided by transportation, line use, projects, and demographics. The demographic data is basically from the census. We have heard from staff from other agencies that it's difficult for them to maneuver through the census data, then we could hear information related to the census just at their fingertips. But for example, for transportation, we have analysis about transit commute time within the community, to different places in the community, by traffic analysis zones. We have vehicle turning movement counts. I came here this morning, and I had an email from the City of Champagne asking me for traffic counts in the community. Then, I immediately sent this to this dataset, and we have over 3,000 counts in the community where you can go there in detail, you will see all the data. And if you click on the points, for example, here, you will be able to see the intersection, the type of intersection, if it is a signalized intersection, and count since the 1990s until We have the same kind of data for turning movement counts, how many people are turning right or turning left, are going through, at the same level. You can see all the data from many, many, many years. We have crashes, crash data, where you can see... There are a lot of points, and it will take some time for you to look at that. Hello? And then we go back to another dataset. We have, and this is something that Pious asked me about it, the location of alternative fuel, electric to charge electric cars and all that. For example, here we have the location and the hourly rate. Ah, this is for rental cars, this is for car share, zipcar, and all the details where the zipcars are located in our community. This is the location of the zipcar, but we also have data related to where alternative fuel stations are located. We have 52 locations in Champagne-Urbana for different kind of alternative fuel, like charging your electric car. And for that, we have the details where it is located, the phone number, the accessibility, how to do it, and when it was opened, the year, all the details for the community. In terms of, if you remember, when I started, we have divided this by transportation for line use. We have all the building permits for Champagne, for Urbana, for Savoy, and for example, we have for affordable housing where they are located. And you can search for a specific information location. For example, for Columbia Place, we have the number of units, the address, and sometimes we have when it was opened, and who served, and if they have a website, and all that information is available there. For projects, we look at which projects and when those projects have been completed in the community. If there are roadways, or if there are make-up projects, then that's why we have divided them by linear, a point, or a whole area. And then, in there, you can see... You can go to the detail of those projects. For some reason, it's getting this blue shade that is not allowing to see the details. Yeah, but even in the previous case, I have that blue shade there, and I don't know why it's not showing, but it's below for some reason. Looks like all the data is below the blue shade. It was working this morning, comments. And for the demographic, as I mentioned, then, for example, if you want to see, I raised the information, you have the information here already available instead of going through the whole census dataset, and you have it for different years, 2012, 2013, 2014, 2015, just clicking, you get the new dataset for Champagne County, for the City of Champagne, for the City of Urbana, for the whole Urbana area. And it's easy at your fingertips, you can access the data when you are applying for grants and all that, you can create maps, download the data, print the data. It's just, we decided, and we have a lot of information, median household, income, population, family income, employment, different kind of... population, family income, employment, different kind of datasets. We developed this based on the request, we are constantly getting phone calls from other agencies, from people in the community regarding getting data from the census that they don't know how to manipulate, or from consultants regarding traffic counts, or regarding facilities in our community, and instead of us sending those requests to every person individually, now we refer them to the website, and that have provided us efficiencies of scale because we are not spending a lot of time on this. And that's what I wanted to present, knowing that there were concerns about data availability from RPC. Any questions? Any other dataset that you want to see, let me know.
All right, if anyone else have any new business at all? Do I entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Sure.
Wait a second.
Nobody wants to leave.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.